Going to call the meeting of the Planning Commission for Monday, March 25th to order. At this time, I'm going to ask if Commissioner Chris Stakes would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Secretary, could you please call roll this evening?
Please let the record show that Chair Dingra is absent today. Present, we have Vice Chair Opal, Commissioners Nelson, Bowen, and Chris Stakes.
Thank you. So item one on our agenda this evening is to do the reorganization of the Planning Commission. So first up will be selection, nomination for a chair for next year.
Madam Vice Chair, may I make a motion to appoint Vice Chair Opal to the chair?
And is there a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that motion.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain. Thank you. So next item is nomination for a vice chair for next year.
I'd like to make a motion to, for Commissioner Nelson for the vice chair.
Thank you. I would accept if, if you guys vote me in.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So that passes three. All right, moving on, the next item is approval of our meeting minutes from our meeting on February 26th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, that carries four zero with Chair Asha, or Chair Dingra's absence today. So moving forward to item B, public comments. So anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual item being heard by the Planning Commission. So do we have any requests to speak for items not on the agenda?
We don't have any.
All right. So moving forward to the consent calendar, we have one item, item number three. A one-year extension of the tentative tract map, TTM 18164, conditional use permit, CUP 18-0008, and site development permit, SDP 18-0016, associated with the demolition of an existing restaurant and construction of a new hundred-room resort hotel with a restaurant, café, spa, and associated parking at 34344 Green Lantern. So do we have a report?
No formal staff report this evening. Kirst Nelson is here for questions. This is the Cannons Hotel site, and the applicant and property owner has requested a one-year extension. They also have a pending extension with the Coastal Commission. If you have any questions, Kirst is available.
Care, there are any questions by any Planning Commissioners on this item?
I just have one basic question. You know, I find it good here in the, in the report how, you know, the granting of the second extension has no impact to the public health, safety, or general welfare. I think I agree with that. And so I'm just thinking about this, in terms of the expiration on something like this generally is to encourage timely progression of the project and perhaps, you know, keeping projects that become outdated from not having considered new information. What else might I be missing in terms of why you wouldn't grant something like this?
Commissioner Bowen, I don't think you're missing anything really. It's a new owner who took it over last year, a little, a little bit before the first. The original two-year window from Coastal Commission became expired, and so they wanted to keep those entitlements alive so they could pursue and do the project as was approved by the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission had a few changes from obviously what we approved, but our underlying entitlements became active when Coastal Commission took action. So we had to extend ours as well, and so like as Brenda had mentioned, they've, they've done their second extension with the Coastal Commission, and we had to do this to keep ours alive as well. They're on different tracks, just FYI, the entitlements and the map are on a couple of different tracks. The map is needed because there's five underlying parcels there, so even if, even if they weren't to like construct the project as approved, it would be beneficial to them to record the map and clean up all that mess under there, just so that when they come back later, they wouldn't have to do that because it's a hefty, hefty fee and to have to go through all that again. But we'll, we'll advise them in that way. They do have some things they have to comply with, with the Coastal Commission before they get to us. So it would behoove them to, to get that done now and then start working with us so we could hopefully issue something and keep this on track.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up some of those coastal issues too, because that was kind of my internal comment was this looks reasonable, especially considering the other delays that they've been facing not internally, so, okay.
Yes.
Right, any other questions? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the one-year extension on tract map, TTM 18164, conditional use permit, CUP 180008, and site development permit, SDP 18-0016, associated with the demolition of an existing restaurant and construction of a new hundred-room resort hotel with a restaurant, café, spa, and associated parking at 34344 Green Lantern.
I'll make a motion to second.
All right, with all of that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so that passes four zero. So we'll be moving on to the public hearing section, item number four. Coastal development permit, CDP 23-0029, to construct a patio cover and an at-grade deck in association with an existing restaurant at 34660 Pacific Coast Highway. This is our staff report this evening.
John Champa provides staff report, thank you.
All right, good evening. Planning Commissioners, John Champa, I'm the case planner for the subject application, which is a request for a conditionally used permit. Just to give a little background here, the project's located in the visitor recreational commercial zone within the city's commercial district, as well as in the coastal overlay or the coastal zone, and is in, within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. Here we have the existing conditions of the property. As you can see here, there's been an established outdoor seating area at the front of the restaurant and is the focus of the, the request this evening. The proposal is to locate a patio cover over this particular area here, which would encompass 780 square feet, which would provide covered seating area, seating for that area that you just previously saw. So here we have elevations illustrating a simple, simple truss design, as well as surrounded by a perimeter, a wall, which would enclose that area and, and would be eight feet, 10 inches in height. The coastal development permits required due to the scope of the project and its proposed accessory structure within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission for a commercial property, so therefore requires this coastal development permit. However, it does comply with all the necessary findings and regulations for the coastal development permit in that it's in compliance with the necessary setbacks and heights for the zone, and there are no impacts to any environmentally sensitive habitat area or access, public access to the beach or the coast. So the project does conform to the all necessary findings and requirements for the city's certified local coastal program for implementation of the coastal development permit. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the requested coastal development permit, subject to the draft conditions and, or resolution and conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. Just, can you walk me through the, how we look at parking on this, or do we look at parking on this?
So parking was not a factor with this. Due to the existing parking was actually closed off, the access was closed off due to a city project, as well as concern related to people backing out onto PCH. And so for those reasons, parking was not an issue. The seating capacity has been looked at, and so staff's in full support of the project.
Okay, so we're basically looking at the parking as a legal non-conforming status and?
That's correct, yes.
I think that's my only question, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, John. Great to see this item on the agenda. Looks like a good project from a family that's been, it looks like since 1950 operating there, which is pretty impressive. I don't know if it has been them the whole time, but I, I imagine so before, you know, the city and the Planning Commission and all of that was even around. So I'm supportive of this project. I, I think it looks good. My only comment was when we're looking at the, you know, current photos, I, I don't think it's looked like that in over a year, right? Because I drive by this every day, and there's been construction of a concrete planter. And so are we talking about, are they leaving that and adding to it, it looks like, or is that getting taken out as part of this project?
So we've got the, well, the, the photo here doesn't, let's see. Yeah, these photos are pre, pre the construction process out there. So essentially that patio, or I'm sorry, the sidewalk, the new sidewalk and its orientation have been reconstructed, so that planter area that you're referring to will be planted as part of the project to soften that. The, it'll soften the transition from the street to the, to the patio cover and the surrounding wall.
Okay. I was just wondering if, you know, it was like part of this project that was kind of?
The city did coordinate the project with the owner, did require an easement, that the owner actually did provide some of his property to the city to reorient the, the sidewalk, as well as address a drainage issue there, as well as just a, a safety issue for people backing out on the PCH. So there was collaboration to ensure that the city's project could be completed, as well as the city's project and its design would be able to integrate into the proposed project. So there was a lot of front-end work on making that happen.
Sounds good. It was good to see that project then, and this one now.
All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo Commissioner Bowen's comments. It says, you know, this is staple of our community. It's been there ever since I've been coming to Dana Point. I don't know how many tacos I've eaten there, but more than I would probably admit. It's great to see these improvements. And the addition of this patio, I mean, I think in this area, we've got the hotel, I don't know if it's opened yet, the one that's been restored. And, you know, it's a great little community amenity close to the beach. It's got public access with the bridge, and I'm fully in support of approving this tonight.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution approving coastal development permit, CDP 23-0029.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes four zero. So I'm going to be moving on to item number five, coastal development permit, CDP 23-0047, site development permit, SDP 23-0029, and conditional use permit, CUP 23-0008, to permit a 99-square-foot addition and remodel to a historic house and a new 801-square-foot garage with a 575-square-foot second dwelling unit at 24721 El Camino Capistrano. So staff report?
John Champa provides staff report.
Hello again. So John Champa, the case planner for the subject application located at 24721 El Camino Capistrano. Just to give a little context on the property, it's located within the Dana Point specific plan in the residential medium-density coastal zone area here. It is within the appealable jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. And you can see it oriented here on the corner of Camino Capistrano and Old Golden Lantern Street. So just to give you a little history on the property, it was originally constructed in 1928. Here you can see the original photo here with the, the front building has remained in its general original condition, however, as you can see, the three-car garage has been converted and modified to additional living area for the, for the home. But it is a, considered historic based on its earliest period of development associated with the city, and it's Spanish colonial revival architecture that was represented at that period of time. Back in 2009, it was added to the city's historic registry, as well as the Mills Act. And then a project was proposed at this project, or property, back in 2021. However, the entitlements have expired, and there's a new owner, and so the new owners are looking to provide, propose a modified version of that project before you this evening. So here we have the existing conditions of the home. As you can see, there are some, some new additions to the home and modifications to the site as a result of just the different owners and the development that's occurred over the years, including the site property wall, as well as this kind of circular turret element off of the side of the building on the old Golden Lantern frontage here. So that was done, I believe, in the 1980s. So the project's scope before you this evening is to incorporate a 99-square-foot addition to the first floor for the historic home, as well as a remodel and new three-car garage. On the second floor would be a 130-square-foot addition, or deck off the master bedroom, as well as a remodel of the second floor, and a 575-square-foot second dwelling unit over the garage. The site improvements proposed are a fireplace within the courtyard area, and then a remodel and reconfiguration of the, of the pool on the site. So the addition and the exterior improvements were reviewed to ensure its compatibility and compliance with the city's historic structure and the city's regulations, which I'll discuss later in the presentation. So the project is in conformance with all the applicable development standards in that the proposed addition and deck to the primary residence, as well as the new garage and second dwelling unit above, do comply with all the applicable development standards, as well as the necessary parking requirements for the second dwelling unit. So here we have the site plan, and you, as you can see here, the, that 1980s addition, the circular turret addition is here, which is proposed to be expanded with that 99-square-foot addition. And then above that would be the proposed deck off the master bedroom. And then here is the, off the alley is the proposed three-car garage, as well as the second, second dwelling unit, which is in this hashed coloring here, and the reconfiguration of the pool, and then the fireplace here. So here we have the floor plan for the first floor, which includes the proposed garage, as well as the single-family residence. Again, illustrating the proposed 99-square-foot addition off of the kitchen and study area, as well as the, the three-car garage off the alley. So here we have the second floor plan illustrating that deck again, and the one-bedroom second dwelling unit here. So here we have the front elevation with the bottom being the existing configuration. Again, that 1980s addition being modified to a more traditional and compatible design with a shed roof off of it to provide a little bit more living area for that particular area there. Maintaining all of the key character-defining features of the property on this elevation, this elevation is the, considered the primary facade in the context of the historic preservation evaluation, and so all of these key character-defining features, including the railing, the deck on the second floor, as well as the, the building and its configuration, are all intact and being proposed to be maintained. Here we have the, the left elevation, which would be a shared property line, while with the adjacent property owner along El Camino Capistrano. This is the view of the courtyard here, and then this is the proposed three-car garage with the second dwelling unit, which is set back, the required 15 feet off the alley setback. Here we have the alley elevation, which is illustrating the three-car garage, again with the setback for the second dwelling unit, and then the addition in the back. So the existing garage would be demolished as part of this. And then what should be the last elevation is the, along El Camino Capistrano, or the right elevation, illustrating the, the proposed addition here, as well as the new deck off the single-family residence, and then the, the old garage. Those openings would be replicated with the new French door and side light configurations here, which is an appropriate modification to the building to essentially tell the story of the original design of the historic structure. So the project's required a coastal development permit due to its location in the coastal overlay or coastal zone, and the project is in compliance with all the necessary requirements due to the fact that there's no impact to public access to the coast or public viewing areas or environmentally sensitive habitat, given the site is, all the improvements are contained within the site, and it's an existing developed site, so there's no impact to any sensitive habitat, and it complies with all the city's applicable development standards here. The site development permit is required for the addition of the historic house to ensure that it is in compliance with all the city's necessary regulations for historic preservation. It did go to our city's third-party historic reviewer, Architectural Resources Group, who reviewed the project with the project's architect. When we went through one or two rounds, making some slight modifications to the project design to ensure that it complied not only to the city's regulations, but also the federal regulations, which are the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So the project does comply with all the necessary requirements and findings for the site development permit. And then lastly, the conditionally used permit is required for the requested site development permit, or I'm sorry, the second dwelling unit. Second dwelling unit is regulated under the County of Orange zoning code, due to the fact that in this particular area, because the site is located within the Dana Point specific plan, any regulatory elements not identified in the said community-specific plan are then deferred to the Orange County zoning code. And so the project was reviewed with those and does comply with all of those in that it, the proposed improvements comply with all the applicable development standards. Second, second dwelling unit is 700, I'm sorry, 575 square feet, so it does not exceed the 600 So it does not exceed the 640 square foot maximum. One additional parking space is provided for the site. And then the design of the project is architecturally compatible with the primary structure as well as the adjacent structures on the site. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the requested entitlements. Subject to the findings and conditions of approval in the draft resolution before you. In conclusion, the planning commission and staff did receive one letter with concerns related to the project due to it would be blocking their ocean view. And as a result of the city not protecting private views, there's, that's up to the planning commission to decide how they want to proceed with that. But the city does not have any view protection ordinance in place. So staff has had two conversations with this applicant and reviewed the plans as well as had a conversation and they did provide their letter, however, they're unable to attend the meeting this evening. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, John. So with that, I will bring it back for commissioner questions at this time. Commissioner Bone?
Sure, yeah. I just was hoping you could speak a little bit more and thanks for the presentation again, John. About SDUs versus ADUs and Y1 versus the other. And maybe you were touching on it with the specific plan item, but I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, so similar to other projects you've seen before you, any second dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit, depending on the terminology that's applicable to the, the regulations. When those are within the coastal zone, those regulations are to be followed until those regulations are amended to be consistent with the, the, the city's updated regulations. So until an LCPA is approved by the city council as well as the coastal commission. Those rules and regulations for an ADU or a second dwelling unit or whatever the applicable terminology is in place until that occurs. So in this case, we've got the Dana Point specific plan, which is a regulatory document for this. And there's no mention or discussion about second dwelling units or ADUs. And so in that, we then refer to the Orange County zoning code, which is the, which in the Dana Point specific plan it calls to defer to. And there is a mention of the regulations specific to that. And as I mentioned, the regulations are, you know, compliance with setbacks, architectural consistency and the third parking space as well as the size.
So in the future, after an LCPA, then our ADU ordinance might govern this type of application?
Once that two were, once that occurs, then that would be in place. So it would have to occur for the city's zoning ordinance in the coastal zone as well as any of the other specific plans, including this specific plan to be updated.
Okay, that clears it up somewhat for me. I'll follow up with you all later, just from my own understanding. And you, you addressed my other question about, you know, whether, I, I didn't think there was any protection for the, for the views of the neighboring property owner, but thanks for confirming that.
Commissioner Chris Dicks, any questions?
I would answer, it was in regards to the, the add-on that they, they want to change on the first floor. But that was added on in the 80s, so it wasn't part of the historical, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that was a later addition that is not a historic integrity.
Okay.
Commissioner Nelson, any questions?
I have one, John, and I apologize, I just got a little confused because there was a requirement for three parking spaces. Is three for the residence only or is one of those for the SDU? Because I also heard you make mention of one additional parking place, so I want to make sure, is it three, is it four? And is it two for the house and one for the SDU?
It's two for, two for the house and one for the SDU, so three in total for the project.
All right, thank you, that clarifies it, I was, I just got confused. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We have none.
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the planning commission for comments and a recommendation. Commissioner Bone, I'll let you start.
Sure. I support the project, it's, you know, one of, I think, the most beautiful homes we have in the community. And so I was glad to see the analysis by the architectural resources group and the work that everyone's doing in relation to it. Looks like a good project and I'm supportive of it.
My comment's the same, I was, it's a beautiful home and I think it's, I think it's a good plan.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, it's, I was here when we approved the last one in 2021. This is a nice improvement to what was already approved. I love the fact that they're getting rid of that rotunda or whatever you call it, the 80s addition. And I'm in full support, it's consistent with our LCP with the Dana Point specific plan. And is, you know, a nice improvement to what I would agree is one of the most magnificent pieces of property in the city. So I'm in full support. With that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve coastal development permit CDP 23-0047. Site development permit SDP 23-0029. And conditional use permit CUP 23-0008. To permit a 99 square foot addition and remodel to a historic house. And a new 801 square foot garage with a 575 square foot second dwelling unit at 24721 El Camino Capistrano.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So that passes on a 4-01 absent vote. So moving on to item number six, coastal development permit CDP 23-0035. Site development permit SDP 23-0026. Administrative modifications of standards AMS 23-0006. For 201 square foot addition and remodel to a single family resident at 3-4, sorry, 3-5-451 Beach Road. So staff report?
John is also the staff planner on this one.
All right, here we go. Third time. So yes, before you this evening is a request for a project requesting several entitlements at 3-5-451 Beach Road. Give me a second here. There we go. All right, let's give this another go. All right. Let's, let's, let's get this going again. Here we go. So, all right, we're cycling through slides now. So the subject application is located within the Capistrano Bay Community Services District, also known as Beach Road. It's in the residential Beach Road 12 zoning designation. It is also located in the city's overlays of the floodplain overlay 3. As well as the coastal overlay or coastal zone, as well as the Coastal Commission appeals jurisdiction for the city. So just to give a little background, this project was, or this structure was originally constructed as a single family residence back in 1920, in 1992. The structure is legal nonconforming for three reasons in that it's constructed, however, as it is constructed on caissons. The finished floor elevation for the house is not elevated above the future base flood elevation. The garages are substandard in terms of size. And it has a nonconforming side yard setback along the south or southeast elevation. So here we have an existing conditions photographs of the property illustrating its, you know, 1990s modern design here. The project's scope before the planning commission this evening is for a 201 square foot addition and remodel to the house. If approved, it would expand the house to 4,471 square feet. It would also remove the unpermitted deck and unpermitted shoreline protection on the seaward side of the structure. Project for, is, it does have a couple of nonconforming elements. However, all of the proposed improvements are located within the required setbacks with the exception of the side yard setback along the east side. And that is proposed to, I'm sorry, along the west side is proposed to extend the three feet, 4.75 inch setback for the addition. However, it is in compliance with the, the front yard setback as well as the patio and structure string lines. As well as the height for the structure and parking, number of parking stalls. So here we have the proposed project, which is proposing to enclose the, the, kind of, it's like a sunroom area along the southeastern property line. As well as two small additions that would enclose some area along the front elevation of the structure. Here we have the first and second floor plans. Here illustrating the enclosure of the terrace on the first floor as well as expanding bedrooms 3, 2 and 3 along the front elevation there, just to provide a little bit more square footage. The project would also result in the remodeling of the kitchen as well as the bathrooms. And some of the common area of the home. Here we have the proposed elevations for the project, which would be reflective of a more simplified, modern design for the structure. But it would not change the, the height or any of the proposed setbacks that are existing as part of the project. Here we have the, the side elevation, the south side elevation and north elevation. Again, illustrating the modern design, the enclosure of the, that first floor terrace. And just updating the finishes to reflect a updated, modern design for the structure. So the project is requiring a coastal development permit. It does comply with all the city's necessary requirements for the city's local coastal program. In that there's no impacts to public access or public recreation that that exists nearby, and this is a private community. So there's no existing access through the property or the community. And so the nearest public accesses are located at Capistrano Beach Park to the north and Poche Beach to the south. And as part of the review, the illegal shoreline protection was identified and conditioned to be removed, which the applicant is agreeable to. As well as the removal of the illegal deck on the seaward side that extends beyond the patio string line. So the site development permit is required due to the project's location within the floodplain overlay. Due to the fact that it is legal nonconforming to the floodplain overlay regulations. As a result of the, the finished floor elevation not being elevated above the future base flood. The project's limited to a one-time 10% addition as well as a one-time 10%, or I'm sorry, a remodel with an annual valuation of 10% of the structure's valuation. And so the, the proposed addition is in compliance with that in that it's only proposing the 5% addition of 201 square feet for those identified expansions to the structure. As well as the proposed remodel is at 43.5%, which is under the maximum allowed 50% for remodels on Beach Road. And is being conditioned to not allow for any future improvements for a period of four years and four months to ensure compliance with that. One, or annual improvement of 10%, no more than 10%. It should be noted that the valuation here that you're seeing is not, you know, real world construction valuation. It's based on the city's standardized building valuation sheet, which is establishes a cost per square foot of the existing value of the structure as well as the proposed improvement. So this is not applicable to today's construction costs in this evaluation. And the last entitlement that's being requested is administrative modifications of standards. This is requested and permissible for projects that are constrained due to either unique conditions as a result of size, shape, location, physical hardships or other constraints. So here, the requested encroachment is for just about two inches along that eastern side. Should be noted that the lot is substandard and is 37 feet wide. And when in this zone, if you were to create a lot today, the minimum width would be 45 feet, so it is substandard in that regard. The proposed addition would maintain the existing encroachment, it would be on the second floor. So the visual impacts would be limited there to community members. And then loud encroachment would allow for improved and integrated architectural and structural design for the proposed project. So with that, the project findings have, staff has determined that the project findings can be met for the requested entitlements. And is recommending approval, subject to the draft conditions of approval and resolution before you. So staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you again for your presentation, John. Any questions of commissioners? Commissioner Bone?
Yeah, just one question, thanks again for the presentation, John. And it was all pretty clear, and I was wondering about some of the calculations on pricing, so that was good to know. You know, we, similar issue that we keep encountering down at Beach Road, right? Some of the, in your review, you have to identify some of the armoring that's taken place. And so you were also talking about the development of the patio past the string line. So in that picture where we see, you know, the, there, it looks like there's some sand and then the rocks. How far are we talking about? And so I would imagine it's like the sand part of the deck that's being removed or they're redoing that whole rock area?
So the surface is being modified slightly here. As you can see where this step down is, is essentially where this extension of the patio has occurred.
Okay.
And so staff has identified that as part of the review and requesting them to be eliminating that as part of the project's scope.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious what it would look like. Because yeah, I looked at some Zillow pictures of this as well and, you know, I saw some of the sandbags down below, which I think, you know, is half necessary at this point in, in that area, and I think, you know, pretty common. So we'll see how, you know, it goes. I saw it was conditioned upon, you know, getting those emergency permits or whatever they need to obtain to get it approved with the city. So this looks like a reasonable project and I think I'm going to be able to support it.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, John, thank you for the presentation as well. On condition 30. So I guess the question that popped into my head is, how does this apply? Let's say there's a fire or something happens. Are they restricted from repairing the home with this condition or is this a restriction on remodels and upgrades?
It's primarily remodels and upgrades if, obviously if they have, like their water heater goes out, something that, like that needs to be replaced. Those aren't elective improvements. And so this is really, to put a ceiling on the elective improvements that are proposed.
So as long as whatever they want to do doesn't require a CDP or anything, then they, they probably could do it?
We, we would look at if they were going to do an interior remodel. Let's say if it was sold and new owners come in in two years and want to do an interior remodel, then we would have to look at it. So long as they're staying below the 50% threshold for the valuation of the remodel. In two years' time or something like that, there would be additional capacity to do a future improvements with an amendment to that deed restriction.
Okay.
So there, there's, there's some flexibility built in.
Perfect, thank you.
So John, I have two questions, one related to the garages, it's
One related to the garages, it's nonconforming because they're substandard. What's causing them to be substandard?
They're like one inch short on the, on the depth and width.
Okay, so very minor.
Very minor.
Okay. And then the second question I have is that the front elevation that you showed in your package is a little different than what the front elevation is showing in the plan set that's in our package. So just want to confirm which one is it that they're going by?
To it. So here we've got the front.
So the front elevation here, and the, the one in the packet has a rendering on the front page there. And then the, the elevation shown in the plans matches that too, so it's a little bit different.
I think it's the coloring that's not really coming through. And then this is kind of whitewashing out the garage doors. You can see some texture on the garage doors here. So I think that's reflective of that. I can have the designer speak to that, but I believe that that's the case.
Yeah, no, I, I saw the elevation there too, so it must be with a scanned in.
Okay, just want to make sure, just because it Right, and I'm not seeing that whatsoever, so it doesn't really come through well here, so I wanted to make sure. Okay, appreciate it, thank you. So with that, I will open a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We have no requests.
No requests, we will close the public hearing and bring it back for commissioner comments and recommendations. Anybody want to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, so I agree with some Commissioner Bowen's comments. This looks like a nice remodel. You know, Beach Road is a tricky place to own property and do anything with your property. I think this is artfully done, fits in well with the current designs down there. And I like the idea of them pulling back some of that protective shoreline stuff that was done without permits and the balcony. So all of those, I'm in support of this project.
I agree with Commissioner Nelson that unpermitted, you know, I think, I think doing something that is the correct way to do it is, is a good step, so I'm in support.
All right, then I will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving coastal development permit, CDP twenty-three dash zero zero three five, site development permit, SDP twenty-three dash zero zero two six, and administrative modifications of standards, AMS twenty-three dash zero 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 six.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. That passes four zero with one absent. So moving on to item number seven, site development permit, SDP twenty-four dash zero 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 two, to construct a second-story accessory dwelling unit totaling five hundred and ninety-four square feet with a balcony to an existing single-story, single-family dwelling located at three four five five four Kaie Portoya, Portola. Staff report.
Alyssa Gonzalez, we have our staff reports this evening. All right, good evening, chair, it feels like we need a break. Anyways, my name is Alyssa Gonzalez, I am the project planner. The project before you is a request to allow a second-story, five hundred and ninety-four square foot ADU addition with a balcony located at three four five five four Kaie Portola. And the subject site is zoned within the residential, single-family twelve zoning district, and it is surrounded by similar, single-family developments. Here's a picture of the existing conditions. The existing site is on a five thousand four hundred and thirty-one square foot lot with an existing, single-story, single-family dwelling that is one thousand ninety-four square feet. It has a attached two-car garage. And the existing, single-family dwelling is nonconforming, nonconforming due to deficient side yard setbacks. And here's some images of some of the adjacent properties, just to get an idea of the neighborhood. And this project does require a site development permit because the proposed attached ADU does not meet some of the development standards for ADUs subject to non-mandatory approvals. This includes the location of the ADU since it is located on the second story, the size of the ADU, since it exceeds fifty percent of the living area of the existing primary dwelling, and since the ADU has been proposed with a balcony. Here's the site plan, the ADU is located above the garage, you can see it in the red area. And so the applicant proposes to construct a second-story, five hundred and ninety-four square foot ADU addition. And the ADU has been proposed with two bedrooms, one bathroom, a common kitchen and living area with a balcony. And access to the ADU is through an exterior staircase. And again, in the red, you can see it's going to be over the garage. And here are the proposed elevations. From the east elevation, you can see the exterior stairway, and that's going to be the access where that door is labeled number five. That's going to be access to the second-story ADU. And the ADU will have a stucco finish and be painted to match the exterior of the primary dwelling. And here, this image goes to show that no additional parking would be required for this ADU since it is located within half a mile of public transit. And here, this table highlights some of the primary ADU development standards and RSF twelve development standards. And as you can see, it is all compliant with these standards that are highlighted here. And to conclude, the project meets all the applicable ADU and residential, single-family twelve development standards, and therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve site development permit, SDP twenty-four dash zero 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 two, subject to the findings and conditions included in the draft resolution. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant. And then I do understand that you were, you all received an email today from, I believe it is the California Housing Defense Fund, and that was in support of the project. That will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Alyssa. With that, any commissioner questions?
Do you have a question? So is this, I mean, I'm not sure about the terminology, but is this effectively turning a home from a single-family residence to a duplex?
It is not. So through the ADU ordinance, this is technically an attached ADU to a single-family dwelling. So this is within a single-family residential zoning district. So this is just a single-family dwelling with an attached ADU, making it basically a two-story home in a sense. So kind of, they will look like that.
It'll have a separate entrance though and everything.
Yeah, that is what is required for the accessory dwelling units.
Thank you.
So I think maybe to get to the core of your question, I mean, in terms of terminology, we wouldn't consider this a duplex, but, you know, in the real world, yeah, there's two units where there would otherwise be a single-family home. And that's because of the state laws that require us, that limit our ability to regulate construction of an ADU in a site like this.
All right, any additional commissioner questions? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We have no requests.
All right, I will close the public hearing. So with that, bring it back for commissioner comments and recommendations. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, so I've reviewed the staff report, visited the site. You know, I don't have any significant issues with these, with this particular project. I do like the fact that they've got a garage still, and they're using it. Or at least that's the assumption, is that the garage is used for parking. It fits in with the community, it's a two-story home. I recognize some of the issues that could be, could come up with a project like this. This one doesn't appear to have those issues, and I'm in support of it. It's consistent with our ADU ordinance. And, you know, it's a, it's a relatively small addition that would be effectively allowed if it was, didn't have a separate entrance. So they're not, you know, overly maximizing their footprint, and they're not going, you know, more than two stories. So for those reasons, I'm supportive of this application.
Any other comments?
Yeah, similarly supportive of it being in compliance with our ADU ordinance, state law. Looks like another good project. So I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving site development permit, SDP two four dash
zero 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 two.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that passes four zero with one absent. So moving on to item number eight. Site development permit, SDP twenty-three dash zero zero three four, to ratify the conversion of a portion of an attached seven hundred and twenty square foot two-car garage while maintaining two parking spaces to a two hundred and sixty-two square foot accessory dwelling unit, ADU, in association with an existing, nonconforming duplex located at thirty-four five eighty-five Kaie Paloma. Staff report.
Natalie Tran, we have our staff report this evening.
All right, last item for tonight. So good evening, commissioners. The project before you is for a site development permit, SDP twenty-three dash zero zero three four, located at three four five eight five Kaie Paloma. So the subject site is located in the residential duplex fourteen zoning district and is surrounded by other, single-family and multifamily dwellings. Here are pictures of the existing front elevation, which show a two-story duplex with an attached two-car garage. Then here are some pictures of the neighboring properties and the parklet across the street. So the existing duplex was originally built in nineteen sixty-two, and sometime around then, there was an illegal conversion of an office and a portion of the garage that created a habitable space separate from the existing two units. So today, the applicant proposes to ratify that conversion into a two hundred and sixty-two square foot attached ADU. And since the existing duplex is nonconforming to the parking requirements of the code, a site development permit is required per the city's ADU ordinance. As you can see in the site plan, the proposed conversion outlined in orange is located in the existing garage, and the conversion will maintain the two existing garage spaces. And you can also see that the existing driveway exceeds the minimum driveway length in the code and would have adequate room for three additional off-street parking spaces for the existing duplex and their proposed ADU. Now, on the left side of the slide is the floor plan, which shows the areas of their proposed ADU in relation to the existing garage and the rest of the first floor. And on the right, you can see that the ADU has an existing bathroom, kitchen, living area, and a proposed closet. And then here are some elevations, which show how the proposed ADU will not change the exterior of the existing structure. Now here, this table shows how their project complies with all the applicable development standards in the RD fourteen zoning district and our ADU ordinance, including setbacks, size, and parking. And because the ADU is part of the primary residence, an additional parking space is not required. So to conclude, staff finds that their proposed ADU does comply with the Dana Point zoning code and would be compatible with the existing homes and their surrounding community. Therefore, staff can recommend approval of site development permit, SDP twenty-three dash zero zero three four. Staff and applicant are here today to respond to any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that report. Any commissioner questions on this one? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. Quick question for you. So on this request, so assuming if we don't approve or ratify this, what happens next?
So it will just remain as the, so it was originally converted into this habitable area. I believe it will just be remaining as, it will not be, become an ADU, but it will remain a two-car garage. And we might have to look into, like, the voting department, whether we might have to remove the additional kitchen in order to make sure it remains a duplex and not an additional ADU.
Okay. And if I understand this right, there's really, what we're approving is not new development, but existing development that's occurred without permits?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question, just whether, you know, I noticed that the view will not change. Do we have any preference on whether that garage door remains a garage door?
The applicant stated that the garage door will remain there. It has been there since, I guess, the original construction of the house.
But like in our analysis, it doesn't matter either way?
As long as it doesn't look like separate from the existing structure, as long as it's compatible with the, the rest of the structure, we don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
I can kind of add to your thought process. That's something that staff has been kind of dealing with too, of thinking about. Should the front exterior be modified to eliminate the garage look?
Yeah.
Then, though, you're left with a driveway that would be driving up into basically the front of the house. So it's kind of the pros and cons of what approach. And, you know, I'd be looking forward to hearing the planning commissioner's thoughts on that, because it's something definitely we've thought about. In this case, we proposed just to keep it the way it was, but we're open to your thoughts too.
The idea of faux garage doors is not a, something that I think, design-wise, is aesthetically terribly pleasing. So I don't support the concept. I was just curious whether it was, or, you know, I didn't think it was required. I thought that would be the response. I just hadn't been sure about that. And, yeah, so personally, it looked like there was some replacing of gypsum wall with some maybe harder surfacing inside the structure. So that sounds like a positive improvement here, along with getting permitted. So overall, I think I'm going to be supportive of this one. And in addition, you know, I guess commenting that this is another one that we got a, another letter from the community, even if they didn't. I think that organization that sent the previous letter identified the wrong address, but we knew what they were talking about.
All right, thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any requests to speak this evening?
We have none.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and then bring it back for commissioner comments and recommendations. Anybody? Well, I'll, I'll start. I actually appreciate somebody doing the right thing. They have the ability to convert it legally to an ADU and applaud them for moving forward. Don't love the garage door look, but again, it is what it is. And it's just the fact of adding another ADU on the books and adding more spaces in the city, so. Supportive of it.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would, oh, please, you sure? So I concur, I, you know, it's an odd situation, it's after the fact. But I do appreciate the idea that we're gonna, people are gonna be living inside this building that it's permitted and it's safe. Because the worst thing that could happen is we kind of look the other way, we don't do anything about it, and then, you know, something happens. I'm also okay with the parking, you know, given that it's in a duplex zone. I believe we have provisions that allow for, you know, basically tandem parking in driveways. And so we effectively can count those spaces, unlike some other cases. So because of that, I'm supportive of bringing this thing into compliance.
I'll second that.
I didn't realize that was a motion. But I'll go ahead and make the motion for your second, so that approval of site development permit, SDP twenty-three dash zero zero three four, to ratify the conversion of a portion of an attached seven hundred and twenty square foot two-car garage while maintaining two parking spaces to a two hundred and sixty-two square foot accessory dwelling unit, ADU, in association with an existing, nonconforming duplex at thirty-four five eighty-five Kaie Paloma.
Now I will second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. So that passes four zero with one absent. So that closes all of our items for public hearing this evening, and we'll move to old business. We have no old business. We have no new business, so we'll move to staff reports.
Thank you, Chair Opel. I just wanted to mention that tomorrow night, we have our third general plan advisory committee meeting, starting at six o'clock in the community center. And the focus of the discussion will be circulation, talking about our everything circulation, including the bike and pets, as well as areas of congestion and those kind of things. So that'll be tomorrow night, and next to me will report back. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any commissioner comments this evening?
Oh, I was going to thank Commissioner or Chair Dingra for his service. He's not here, so we'll do that next month, and congratulate you on being the new chair.
Thank you. Appreciate that. My only thing is I'll be absent for my first meeting, but I will be here, ready to go for the second one.
I would like to thank Commissioner Nelson and also outgoing Chair Dingra for their appearances. for their appearances, along with our community development director at the Planning Commissioners Academy earlier in the month, where Commissioner Nelson spoke on a couple panels and represented the city well. I think it was a great event. I personally learned a lot and found it to be a really nice opportunity. So thanks for passing it along to the staff.
All right, so with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting until 6:00 PM or soon thereafter on April 8th. Thank you.